So we'll have a project and delivery method established. What is the project? And are we going to do design bid build? Are we going to do design build? That'll be established. The design is done and DSA approval received. We will receive a public works information sheet that will give us the requirements of the project. What kind of licenses required, number of days to complete the project, any specifics like that. We'll develop the bid documents and start the bid process. We will advertise, we'll do a pre-qualification if necessary, conduct a mandatory job walk, and allow for pre-bid inquiries. Field bids are received and a public bid opening is conducted. The bid review takes place. We make sure that the bid is responsive and that the bidder is responsible. Notice of intent is issued naming the lowest responsible bidder. If it's greater than, I mean, I'm sorry, if it's less than $175,000, we'll receive the bonds and verify them, we'll execute a contract, we'll issue a notice to proceed, and we'll place the item for board ratification. If it's greater than $175,000, we'll place the item on the board for award. The bonds are received and verified, a contract is executed, and a notice to proceed is issued. Once the project is underway and it is all complete, the final completion and closeout is determined by the architect, inspector of record, and construction manager. There's some required documentation, so we need consent of surety for the final payment. We need certification of satisfaction of indebtedness, certification of insurance, a guarantee form, asbestos and other hazardous material certification, and then our construction manager will complete and submit a contractor's performance evaluation form. The final acceptance is placed on the next board meeting or acceptance by the Board of Trustees and the board period begins, I mean, the warranty period begins. So before, in the previous slide, I spoke to a responsive bid and a responsible bidder. So I'm going to skip to the bottom part of that slide before I turn it over to Joe and talk about, for projects that are under our threshold limit for pre-qualification, all bidders do submit a statement of qualifications as part of their bid document. It's reviewed and scored by staff. There are five areas that are looked at in this statement of qualification. They consist of essential requirements, performance and experience, safety, legal and administrative proceedings, and references. We do check references. If any one of those items lead us to be concerned about anything, we'll investigate further. For those projects that are 3.5 million and above or require any kind of specialized expertise, we have a pre-qualification program. I'm going to now turn that over to Joe Carroll, and he can provide you information on that.
Thank you, Margie. Yes, for contracts that are over $3.5 million or for those that have specialized expertise or projects through design build or other kind of alternate delivery methods, we do a pre-qualification process. Contractors will submit a questionnaire along with supplementary information, including copies of relevant licenses, information on recent performance history of large public and private projects they've done, and financial information, audited financial statements from the last three years. We will check their financial soundness, we'll check performance history, we'll call references from previous projects to make sure that they've done, you know, acceptable work. And the questionnaire itself follows very closely the model that was published by the Department of Industrial Relations for public agency pre-qualification, and so it is scored. And if contractors are found to be, you know, in compliance, they have enough points, they pass the references, and there aren't any other red flags that might, you know, unresponsible such as questions about, have they been removed from projects? Have they been, have they filed claims against previous owners of their previous projects? If there are such things, they'll submit information that, details about those items that we can then follow up on. But assuming that there aren't any issues like that, then they are pre-qualified for a certain bid amount. And that bid amount is based on the size of projects that they've completed in the last five years, but also based on how large of a bond they represent that they're able to receive. They need to submit a notarized letter from a surety that talks about how large of a bond that they would be able to issue for them. And so, you know, when you average those numbers and you get a pre-qualification amount, then they are then allowed for the next two years to bid on projects that are at or below that estimated amount. If they've already, if they're already pre-qualified and a new bid comes up, they don't need to submit the application over again, they just need to validate that the information is still true and correct for that. We also administer to Lees Group the community and student workforce project agreement that was recently passed, and I know that you've been speaking about it recently, but just to give an update, that agreement is, you know, applicable to a certain list of projects, mostly $8 million and above, but it's also applicable to, I'm sorry, $6 million and above. But the first project has been awarded under that agreement. It's the video surveillance camera project. And they began onsite, I believe it was last week, so we've gone through all the kind of pre-job meetings and coordinations that we've had to do, and soon we'll be, you know, looking for reports on how well they're doing at compliance as well as the local hiring and apprentice hiring that the new agreement will conclude. That local hiring is a three-tier system where district area residents are given, and veterans are given priority. A contractor needs workforce that they're asking for from the local union hiring halls. The unions are able to push those people to the top of the list for first to middle. We also are coordinating with those unions and with the district's construction free apprenticeship program to make sure that the graduates from that program are aware of opportunities available to them in the unions and that are, we're keeping track of who's on the rolls so that if they don't have enough local people in certain trades, then we can recommend people, we can help get them into those trade apprenticeship programs so that they can work on their local projects. And, you know, the contractors, it can be either union or non-union contractors are allowed to bid on and work on these projects. In this case, most of these, for this project, most of these contractors are non-union, but they're cooperating with the unions in terms of receiving workers and making fringe benefit payments. We are also in the, you know, just opened up bids today for the, for the next project under that CSWPA, the building pre-renovation. And so that will be coming up in the upcoming months. You'll be starting to get reports and data as to how that's working.
So some upcoming changes and trends that we're seeing. I think when I last reported back to you, we were just starting the SB 854, and that's the DIR Public Works Reform. It's been fully implemented, all our documents contain the required language. Our staff are submitting the PWC 100 forms for all projects greater than $1,000, and we make sure and verify all DIR registration for any contractor prior to work being done on campus. The next upcoming bill is AB 626, is the Public Works Project Claims Resolution. So it's effective January 1st, 2017. It changes the process for our change order request claims. We're updating our contract documents, and we're undergoing some training for our staff. So the change in bid environment. So what we were seeing earlier in the year, that bidders were being more selective on projects, we were receiving fewer bids per project. The bids were coming in higher than estimates. So we did some increase in our outreach and our advertising efforts. We did some notification, prior notification and kind of marketing to contractors. I would like to report to you today that we did conduct a bid opening. We did have five bidders submit, so, and several of those were below the estimate. So I think our work is paying off. Some statistics, since July 1st, 2015, so for the last 16, 17 months, we've conducted 24 public works bids, 12 equipment material bids, 36 RFP or RFU processes, 410 contracts have been issued, 3,830 purchase orders have been dispatched. And this is done by a staff of four buyers and two contract pet. So they do a phenomenal job. It's overseen by our deputy director of purchasing contracts, and I just really want to recognize them.
Okay, questions? Trustee Zia.
Thank you, President Baxter, and thanks to staff for bringing this before us. I had asked for this presentation. I appreciate you giving a very elaborate overview and presentation in detail. I have a few questions that I want to present, that I want to ask you, and I'm going to try to follow your slides. All right, I believe it's slide number... seven first, start there. By the way, you both did a great job, so thank you. So I've brought this issue up a few times now. You know, the flow chart that you have here where you have contracts that are less than 175K that get executed first, and notice of proceed is issued, and then you have board ratification. What happens if the board doesn't ratify since you've already issued a notice to proceed?
If the board doesn't ratify the contract, then I would imagine the contract would be unbind, would not be valid. We would have to stop the work.
Okay, but you've already executed the contract, so it's technically binding, isn't it?
In order for it to be binding, it has to be fully executed and approved or ratified by the governing board.
Okay. So that means you, they've done the work and they can't, they may not get paid.
But I will remind you that you, the board has approved the resolution for the Vice President of Administrative Services to go ahead and enter into contract.
Yes, I'm aware of that. Thank you for the reminder. And they do come before us as, it's coming before us every time for contracts under 175,000 that we ratify. And that's the particular questions I've had, if the board doesn't ratify, what happens then? So moving on to the section that you have, I believe it's number 12, page, well, before we go to 12, on page 11, when you're closing out projects, what is your contractor performance evaluation forms based on? Like, for example, do you do a contractor performance evaluation midway in the project and give an opportunity for the contractor to remedy the deficiencies by project completion so that they have an opportunity to correct any kind of errors that we note during the process of the construction?
No, we don't do a performance evaluation midway through. However, the construction manager should be managing that project and providing that feedback as it goes along. The types of questions that are answered on the contractor performance evaluation goes to performance of the contractor, did they have enough staffing, did they have enough manpower on the job? Talks to their change order request, talks to enough materials and supplies, did they pay their bills, those kinds of things, things that end up being issues.
Okay, is it qualitative or is it scored in a way that we can say, okay, above this threshold, it's deemed acceptable performance? Like, for example, let me give you an example of one of the agencies that I've represented in my past life. One of the criticisms was that it's subjective because it hinges on the opinion of the superintendent or the construction manager, the program manager, and it may have been a valid point. So we had to design a performance evaluation that was quantitative and defensible and demonstrate what would be a five out of five performance to meet the standards of the agency. And they, contractor would have to meet 75% of the score, 75 out of 100, in order to be eligible as one criteria for future contract award. So I just want to find out if that's something that we do at the district. Otherwise, you know, we've, I've seen it's not worth the paper it's written on, but that's just been my experience. You certainly, I would certainly be interested in the experience that our district staff has had, and I want to see how effective this tool has been. What has been your experience in that regard?
We don't have a quantitative scoring sheet for it. We do ask for a lot of details. The way that it's effective is if the contractor is, well, two ways. One, we do get calls from other districts, other owners who are looking at this contractor because we've either been listed as a reference or as a previous project. So we will refer to that and utilize that evaluation form in response to that. And going forward, if that contractor is, has submitted a bid and is the apparent low bidder, we will go back to that and look at that and see if it raises any red flags.
So, in other words, based on other agencies' input, I think you have it on your slide 12, if I'm not mistaken, under references, is that how you check? So let's just take a hypothetical situation. You have a circumstance where the apparent lowest bidder is, you check your reference, their references, and it's not flattering. What happens at that point? How do you determine, how do you determine whether or not this contractor is responsible?
Well, we don't just take the references on themselves alone. We look at all those other items as well. And if the references are giving us red flags, maybe we need to dig in and look at some of those other questions. Now, the questions under the essential requirements, those are yes/no questions, so they're either qualified or not qualified. If something in the reference checks comes up that may lead us to believe that they answered incorrectly on those questions, then we would probably deem that bidder as non-responsible.
Okay, so...
Now, that being said, if we deem the apparent low bidder as non-responsible, we have a duty to present that evidence to that bidder, and they have a right to rebut that evidence.
A hearing.
And provide evidence that they are qualified bidder, and that would take place as a hearing.
Right. So they get an opportunity to be heard, and in the hearing, the determination is made subsequently, correct? So when it comes to, I'm assuming, so for all construction contracts under $3.5 million, we have this form, correct? That is partially based on yes/no answers and then safety questions. Do we look at change orders and claims, past performance of the contractor on change orders and claims that they've submitted on similar projects?
In the process, in the area that's legal and administrative proceedings, there's quite a few questions regarding claims, arbitration, mediation, those kind of things. When they answer yes to those, we ask for them to provide the details. And that is scored. Those, these areas, the areas that are not yes/no, qualified, not qualified, are scored.
Okay, and is there a certain minimum score that they have to get? And what is that?
Yes, there is. It depends on the area, and I can, right off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you, but it's, it's at about the 75, 80 percentile.
I see, okay. And then in the pre-qualification section that you mentioned, I'm assuming for both scenarios, you look at the financial stability of these contractors, correct? And I think it's a public contract code section that we have to look at that, is that correct? How do you determine the financial capacity and soundness of these contractors in order to deem them responsible?
For the, for the projects over 3.5 million with the formal pre-qualification process, they submit audited financial statements for the past three years. The primary metric we'll use is to look at their current asset ratio, current assets and current liabilities. We're looking for a number of about, you know, 1.5 or above, or if it's less than that, that's why we collect three years so we can look back and see. It's a little under this year, but they were above for the last couple of years, and so if the average is above, that's okay. We have not had to disqualify anyone for that.
And for under 3.5 million, how do you determine financial stability?
Well, one of the ways we would do that is by contacting the surety and seeing if any payments had to be made by the surety on behalf of the contractor.
Okay, great. So as far as, I'm sorry, you said for change orders and claims, and this is construction claims, do we have some sort of a threshold that we say this is not acceptable? Like, if we get a change order happy contractor, and I noticed you said 10% is the maximum, I think 10% is high personally, that's just my perspective, but how do you determine that this contractor is viable and is not going to game the system essentially by submitting a low bid and making it up at the end by change orders?
Well, if I had a crystal ball, that would help, but essentially, we're looking at past performance, we're looking at those references. When we call the references, that's one of the questions we ask past owners. We also talk to architects and inspector of records. They give us a pretty good idea of how that contractor operates, so then we would know.
So it's based on somebody's opinion that they've worked for?
Could be, could be. It's all, it's all taken into account. And let me, and Joe and I were talking about this earlier. So when we conduct the reference checks, whatever feedback we get on that contractor and we're awarding to that contractor, we provide that information to the construction manager so that they can manage the project appropriately if there's any tidbits of information that they find.
Does the experience requirements that you're looking for or past performance include wage theft? Looking at whether there's been wage theft and requirements of meeting prevailing wage or if they had past experience, but particularly wage theft, which has been pretty dominant in the past years?
Yes, there are questions about paying prevailing wages and if there has been any violations of such, yes.
How do you verify that?
Well, if they've, if they have reported any violations, there's, they are required to include information about what happened, you know, how much they were supposed to pay, what was the date and the information behind the incident. And sometimes, you know, it's only happened a couple of times, but I've called previous owners and asked them to verify, okay, is this the correct amount, something like that. For items that actually went to a civil wage and penalty assessment from the Department of Industrial Relations, that information is now available on the contractors, on the Contractor State Licensing Board website.
Okay.
And so I will check their licenses and see if they have any of those incidents.
Doesn't the district attorney also keep records, like, as far as filings?
Oh, I imagine they would, I haven't checked.
That, okay, I think this is, this gives me some comfort. And lastly, on this slide 14, how's SB 854 working out for us? Are there small businesses being impacted by this, or is, how's that going?
Well, when it was first enacted, we did hear a lot from contractors about, we had to educate them, get them registered, they had to pay the $300 fine, no, not fine, sorry, $300 fee to register. As of late, I have not gotten any negative feedback. Everybody's on board, we're moving forward, so, yes.
Okay, and on AB 626, this assembly bill concerns me personally. I think it was jammed through with another, under another bill. And it's my understanding that it's essentially that agency, it puts agency on notice to resolve the change order, and it doesn't necessarily have to be a legal claim, it can be a change order by, within a specific timeline. And has that caused administrative burden on our staff, or what's the impact that we've seen, if any, on this front?
Well, we haven't seen any yet because it doesn't go into effect until January 1, but what we have, how we have been impacted is now we have to change all of our documents, and we are conducting a training. We're having our legal counsel come in and conduct a training so that we're all very familiar with it and the ins and outs.
Right, and just for the benefit of the board and the public, can you explain what this assembly bill entails and what that means for the agency, for our district?
Well, in kind of an overview, because I'm not as familiar with it as I will be next Monday, but I understand that it puts the time limits on it for 45 days to review a change order or a claim. It allows the contractor to request a meet and confer, as well as it institutes a 7% interest or payment if it's not done in a timely manner.
Which is that 45-day turnaround time. This is...
Trustee Zia, people have suggested me, not tonight, on other occasions, that I should limit question, the time of questions, and I have said, no, I don't want to do this, but time is marching on here. And so if you could please wrap up, I'd appreciate it.
As I stated, that was my last question, but just to respond to you, President Baxter, I think it's prudent and it's wise of you not to accommodate stifling discussion or request to stifle discussion. I think our founding fathers established our great nation to express, discuss, and resolve, and I will continue to represent the people, however long that takes, I will continue to ask those questions. And I'm sorry if it's an inconvenience to some of the board members, but I will not stop from working for the people.
Believe it or not, it did not come from the board members. Not one board member has asked me, it's come from the public.
Well, that's, I respect your opinion, but I won't, I've got to be able to do my job, I need to have the adequate information, and I'm going to not refrain from asking questions that will protect the best interests of the community. So the answer to that is no, I won't accommodate that request. Thank you to staff for a great presentation. This gives me a little bit more comfort than I originally had, so I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Trustee Malauulu, oh, I'm sorry, trustee Kellogg asked me several minutes ago.
And it really is, I appreciate this. It's the first time I've really seen detailed about the procurement. I mean, we talk about it all the time, and after a while, you get very used to it. And so to see it actually in a PowerPoint, I mean, I thank you for doing this as far as, it's a very simple document to follow. The one thing I would only, two things. One, in the, in the RFP process, when people do that, the question came up about, you know, people starting the work, just from experience of, usually nobody starts the work until they're given the authorization. The authorization does not happen until the board takes an action. And so if a company would move ahead or with the understanding that, well, don't worry, those companies are at risk, and I think everyone knows that when you do the RFP process. Because I do so much in my professional life with RFPs, the one thing I would always encourage to do, and it's not in here, it's not critical, but a lot of time and energy goes into preparing a response to an RFP with a chance of not getting the work. So the simple courtesy of a letter explaining to them and also referred to as an exit interview, that is not another opportunity, a second bite of the apple, so to speak. You did not get the contract, but more times than not, what they want to know is, what did you like, or what was the issue that awarded the contract to this firm over that firm? And those are, those are very, those are very helpful. The reason I bring that up is because you want these same companies to come back and bid again in the future. And if you develop a reputation, and there are colleges in the system that, when you see an RFP, it's like, good luck, go get them, because we're not going to spend the time and the energy, because it almost as if it was, we should have been honored to present something to them. So that's, I think, is very important as an outreach and a final for their effort, whether they were successful or not, to give them a good explanation. More times than not, it's just, it's the bottom line. But, so I appreciate it, it was well done and very well laid out, and I appreciate it. Information item only, so I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Malauulu.
Thank you. I have three questions, and I apologize, I'm having technical difficulty. Myra, thank you, Myra, she's been trying to help me. What I see in front of me is what you guys see, and the district iPad, I'm supposed to be able to jump between... to be able to jump between documents, and I haven't been able to do that, so I've been trying to use my phone, but it's too slow, so I don't know which slide it is, but it's the slide where you were talking about the apprenticeship program for the trades and the unions? Which one was that? Because I, Myra, I'm almost there.
13.
Slide 13. Okay, I have three questions about that. Number one is, you mentioned the unions and the trade unions, who are the unions that we currently have partnership with in that apprenticeship program? That's the first question. Second and third is, how many current students do we have that have participated in that apprenticeship program through the procurement process? And then also, how many students have we had in the past, who have already been served through the apprenticeship program with the procurement? And if you forget, I have them written down on a napkin.
Excellent. This is high-tech as my menelaus holding, okay.
Right, and thank you.
Yes, so the apprenticeship programs that we're able to work with are all of the, those that are affiliated with the Building and Construction Trades Council of Los Angeles and Orange County, and that covers just about everybody who's onsite doing prevailing wage work, building a project. You know, the liaison from that group has been attending the, excuse me, the pre-apprenticeship program meetings, to come, you know, hear about how they're conducting their training, and how they can provide tours to the different apprentice programs. I know that the students went down to, I think, the electrical program, I think the plumbing program, a couple of others like that. My understanding, and don't quote me on this, but I remember the last time I talked to them, it sounded like they had graduated a few hundred students from their, you know, from their, it's a few-week pre-apprenticeship program, that gives them kind of the overview of the construction process, and prepares them to be in a, in a formal union apprenticeship program.
This year, a few hundred, this year, or total?
Last two years, I think. The program has been just that long.
A few hundred, low end of the thousand, or high end?
Like 400, something like that, yeah.
Wow, and they're our students?
I think they are, well, they all certainly attended classes here at the college, I don't know if they've attended other ones.
That's great.
Yeah, and it sounds...
That is great. And they participated in the procurement process with you for the RFQs and RFPs?